It is seven o'clock. Call the January sixteenth council meeting to order. We'll start with roll call, please.
Yes.
Hi, Michael.
Here.
Lane.
Here.
Murdock.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Everyone's present, Mayor.
I would ask you all to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever-living, just as for all.
Okay.
There's no one here.
Oh, I did that without my mic.
They're on camera.
First item tonight's our consent agenda. We have the minutes of our council meeting of January second and pay ordinance number eight seventy. Any discussion or questions about the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion when we approve the consent agenda.
Second was Ritter.
Ritter.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hi, Michael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Murdock. Yes.
Thank you, Council motion hearing.
Okay. Our next item is council number, or council pay ordinance eight seventy A. Please note that Councilman Ritter's left the meeting for a moment.
I'll make a motion when we approve pay ordinance number eight seventy A.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Hi, Michael.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Okay. He's coming.
That's eight seventy A.
All right, our next item's call to public and seeing no public here, I'm going to dispense with reading the entire paragraph, but if anyone was here to address the council, they could do it now. Item three, old business. We have none, so we'll go to four, new business. Item A, discuss strategic plan update.
Yes, council, actually both items tonight are plan updates. Strategic plans first and then capital improvements plan will be next. We always try to do this in January, February timeframe so that we're ready with any changes before we start the budgeting process for 2021. January sixteenth of 2020 and we're already starting to talk about 2021. So what I did on the strategic plan is what I've done the last two years. I've taken the updated version that we generated in 2019 at this time. Remember, we do those as red lines to the previous version. So our update from last year was a red line of the previous years. I accepted all those red lines in the document to have it been a clean document. And so now the red lines that you see on the version in your packet are changes from the 2019. And so the thought moving forward is that, you know, we'll archive those. So we'll have these red lines from the 2018, from the 2019 to 2020, so we can see the kind of progression as we move through the years. What was on the list, which priorities changed, if there's ever a reason to go back and get a little history on some of that. So what you have in front of you is the 2019 version redlined to show changes that I'm suggesting, just the first cut, first draft, really in terms of the modifications that I've made. And we can flip through these page by page. But overall, as we go through those lists, you know, that table that we've got of those in each of those four areas, I'll pull it up here. As you go through those, essentially, some of these have been marked out because it's a task that's been accomplished. There's been some wordsmithing to some others as a result of what's happened in the past year. Some priorities have changed, timelines have changed. Really, nothing is earth shattering. I don't think anything is coming out of left field in terms of anything new. But we have made quite a bit of progress on a lot of this stuff over the last year. And so the last section, after the tables, you know, the colorized tables, we have this section of completed items or ongoing efforts. That's where most of the red lines really are. And this, I've kind of tried to narrate where we are in the progression of these goals and which ones we've accomplished and just changing conditions behind why we're doing what we're doing and what's really kind of a... I think this section's kind of morphed into sort of a progress update, essentially, you know, a narration of the progress update that we've made in the last year. So in terms of just big-ticket items within our strategic plan that we more or less have checked off the box, we had a lot in there about the completion of the comprehensive plan and inclusion of the sunflower, future land use categories in that, tying the Parks and Recreation Master Plan into that. So that was, we worked on that for a year and a half or more, but the comp plan was done in 2019, as was the Park and Recreation Plan. And the Park and Recreation Plan, in the sequence of completing that document, we've kind of checked off some boxes with trails. You know, trails have been in our strategic visioning, high on the priority there. So some of the Parks and Rec Plan stuff has checked those boxes. We also completed the City Hall Master Plan and the Disaster Mitigation Plan. So three kind of major sort of planning documents were completed in 2019. And then also the bond referendum was the biggest part. And that, you know, kind of hits on trails, it hits on stuff with soccer and some of those larger ticket items. So in terms of, you know, what's been done, those kind of items have been checked off the list. The new stuff that I have on here, if we go through, and again, you know, stop me if you want to interject here, but really, there's only a couple of new initiatives. And I've made some notes here to myself that I didn't get included, but I would like to get included. One of the new initiatives is in our 2020 budget, we have these asset management funds. You remember, there's one for the pool, there's one for water, there's one for sewer. And the thought was, you know, we need to be replacing assets as they wear out. I think one of the, we need to put in our plan here is to generate actual plans for those funds because we really didn't do that. So, you know, that involves inventory of what's there, estimation of lifespans and replacement costs and just kind of have a rolling plan for those. So that's one thing I think I want to include in there. The one thing I did get in the redline version that you have is the economic incentive policy overhaul. Kevin, Lori and I are working on that now. That ball's in my court. You know, I've... Yeah, I know. It's been, no, it's not. If you don't remember where we left off. Nope, no, it's not you. It's me. Doing some work on establishing kind of infrastructure costs for those, the priority areas. And so that's kind of where we are. And I'm getting close, I'm within a week there, so we can reconvene ourselves on that. But I want to get that in the plan because that's a big...
Because that's not in here.
It's in the redline version of what you have. I can't remember where I put it. So that's in there. The other thing is the idea of developing a specific infrastructure feasibility plan for this immediate growth, southwest growth area. And I've defined it as south of K-10, K-10 to, well, maybe even 91st down to 103rd, and then west of Lexington out to Sunflower. I could pop up a map if you want. But that's kind of the area, and we've talked about this in a number of contexts. But our current sewer master plan, the future plans for sewer extension are a very broad brush. We just need a finer point on those plans for this area, and we need to include roads and water and other public infrastructure with that. So kind of an area plan, a nuts and bolts area plan, I would call it. When you talk about area plans, sometimes those kind of remain high level in terms of land use and pretty pictures and renderings that they...
And it's really to bring the costs to it, too, because we've got these plans and the comprehensive plan and that kind of thing, but what we don't have is a feel for what are the public infrastructure costs.
It's that, it's cost per developable acre.
Cost per developable acre.
Yeah. So that's there. Where on the page I'm on? Page ten. Put that in there. The other one about economic incentive policies, I know I have it in here somewhere. I just can't remember right now where I put it, in the redline version. So those are really the two. Oh, the other thing I wanted is the street department, the redevelopment of the old street department property. We're working on that, too. You know, Kevin, you're involved with that. We did get the Phase One environmental assessment back. Of course, it recognized a lot of things that need to be followed up with for Phase Two. One of the biggest, I don't want to get in the weeds on that one, but one of the biggest things is that substation down there with PCBs and that sort of a thing. I do have a price proposal for a Phase Two that's pretty high because of that. So I'm thinking maybe we divorce that from our conversation. I don't know. Anyway, that's kind of into the weeds a little bit. But developing and promoting a redevelopment plan for that area would be another goal or initiative that I want to include in here. So I've got those things on my list already. I think I'll stop there and leave it up to you guys to ask some questions and give some direction on what you'd like to see or changes you'd like to make this year.
With the broadband, it looks like our first was our objective, I guess I'm kind of wondering about, you know, we got it here in the underserved areas. And I think that's kind of was our initiative, is to expand to underserved areas.
Yeah.
But I think that even the areas that are served may not have as great of services now as the underserved areas had. And so I'm kind of wondering if we want to expand that to keep working, I mean, I know it's probably more the business with RG and/or Zoom or whoever comes and uses the things to expand out to the rest of the city. But I guess I'm kind of concerned about gap areas or are all gap areas supposed to be covered with this plan and just, like, for the businesses and being able to continue to know that they have an option for high fiber in all areas. Because, I mean, you know, like, I bring up my place, for example, it's available for me to get one of these new services at the store. But had it not been, mine is so slow that it would be something really important as a business owner. So I want to make sure that the businesses in town have access or opportunity in some way to be able to do it. And I know it's not us doing that, but some way coordinating or working to make sure that, you know, all businesses. And then one added thing in the coverage area, and this may not be the time to ask about this, but I was asked about it again, like the tree farm and across the street from them, the garage condominiums. Where do they fall in this? Because, you know, they should be covered, but they're not. I mean, they should be in the area with, but they're not. They don't have, you know, and those are two, they're, I mean, the one's a business. Hopefully across the street, though, isn't that supposed to at some point possibly be commercial or business? And then you've got the garages that there's not access that is any good. And so...
Well, they have internet at the farm.
What internet?
It's not, I mean...
Did they have Time Warner? I mean, Spectrum? Or do they have some other?
It's, I think it's some others, not Spectrum.
Well, it's not...
We used it out there because...
Well, it's not good because they asked me about it. So whether they have it or not, it's not what they would like it to be.
They would like some better.
What's that?
There was a couple areas that didn't act like they got served.
Well, you're right. And there's some gaps along Corliss Road, I know, between 88th and K-10. There's a gap there of two or three homes. Yeah. You know, early on, when we're with the broadband committee, we were trying to get a handle on what areas had service and what the service was, and it wasn't an easy thing to do. You know, we know places, a couple places like that. So really, you know, when Time Warner says, here's our service coverage map, and it covers everything north of K-10, that's not exactly the case. And so that's what you, these pockets are talking about.
And I guess if you read objective one A, it really is saying that we're going to continue the work. I mean, it does say that, I guess. I just want to make sure that we...
The other part of it is the enterprise service portion. So big businesses like Merck and Houdamaki and maybe Rare Pacific, they need the assurances and guarantees and service commitments of interclass price service that really RG and Zoom really, that really don't offer. So it takes kind of a more, a bigger provider to come in and be able to do that. So that's really what one A is, areas of enterprise class service, smart city promotion. That's really, one A's getting at that. What you're getting at with the pockets could be another objective under there, I think, more specifically, to make sure that no one's left out in the cold. We got, I'm sure there are other examples around town.
Yeah, I'm sure there are.
Well, I called them up and they said they cost me $15,000 for them to run a line to, you know, half a block to my house.
Yeah.
That, I think, is worth doing, to be involved with that.
I would agree. I mean, and that's the, you know, the idea is we want good service and we want it throughout our community.
So that everybody has access to good service.
I agree. We need to keep our eye on the ball so that we...
Yeah, because you hope that the commercial opportunity is what began to take, right. That's what drives it, particularly with a competitive scenario here, not just with the incumbents, but with two fiber providers. One of them's going to get out and say, I'm going to build a big business here. I'm going to capture as many customers as I can. So I think we're going to have to continue to encourage them along. But the reality is there is business opportunity for both of them or whoever's going to get, whoever is going to get there first. And then you also presume that, as has been seen in other areas of the metro, is that the incumbent then responds as well. And you end up with three. So we've got a competitive commercial situation. We just hope that it works like it's supposed to.
Some of it's still not competitive. I mean, it's just like the church on Tripp Street or Copeland Way now. You know, we did have Spectrum there, and of course, that field caught fire and they didn't replace the line.
Right.
And now we're running on AT&amp;T and it's really super slow. But, you know, there's no competition there because they won't come, Spectrum won't come that half a block to service that unless they have $4,000.
Yeah. No, and I get, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying that there are other companies in town now that we didn't have before in Zoom and RG.
Well, and I would suspect Zoom and RG are going to want the commercial business.
We already seen it going down the right ways.
I was going to say, we're already seeing them move into that area. So now the pockets like the Cedar Valley Farms and things like that become a different story on those businesses. But one of the things we heard consistently were people were not satisfied with Spectrum and the rates and things like that. So what's going to be, and this is where there's no penalties on it, but RG was supposed to fulfill the rest of the city within two years, but there's no penalties to that. So getting it to other people, because, I mean, it's like, okay, I have Spectrum and I'm paying for 300. I'm not getting 300. So for being able to provide to the rest of the city those options, and that's where I was talking, it's like, okay, the underserved areas are now becoming the best served. So now you end up with pockets of, now there's more...
Now, the rest of the city's underserved.
Or now there's, well, now there's other underserved that have AT&amp;T, or then you have the competitive side. So it's just a matter of keeping that momentum going to, yeah. And so it's not one where we can sit back and just relax, but we got to keep, we got to figure out a way to keep things moving.
Deal to try to keep this ball rolling.
Yeah.
You know, I think the broadband committee ought to meet again.
Yeah, yeah. We've talked, yeah, we've talked about that.
Yeah, we probably should because I do know of a, I do know of a separate enterprise class provider that, because of the industry that we work in, that is looking into Soto. So it's like, okay, great. But we got to get them here.
Mike, that just triggered one little thought. And again, this is maybe not the right time, but I see a lot on, questions from people on Facebook about internet services. So in, on our, and I haven't looked at this, but on our city website, do we have like a link to who you turn your utilities on with water on and ever G and that? And could we add that on?
Who your providers are.
Yeah, who our providers are. And could we add the names of those onto it, too? So when, you know...
So it's kind of like a new resident information sheet.
Yeah, like a new resident packet.
Right. I mean, if we don't have that online, I think most places do, where it would connect to who you have to contact. And then maybe we could list them. And then it's up to them to contact, I mean, then it's easier for them to contact, find, give them, all you do is give them your address and they'll tell you if they can cover it or not.
I mean, it could even be looking to move to DeSoto. Here's, here's your providers for everything. I don't really think we...
That might say something for what you need to work on, maybe?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think we do because I look...
So it would be nice.
I mean, it'd be nice for existing residents. It'd also be nice as a PR of those looking to move to DeSoto. Okay, if I am, what's there? Because I know when we were looking to move here, I called some friends here going, okay, what restaurants are there? Who are the utilities? This? And listing some of that from at least that, yeah.
You may include the Mertsey numbers for those services as well.
Moving on.
Yeah.
Sorry, my mind goes too many directions.
On what we need to add on the broadband. Yeah. Right?
Mm-hmm.
Keep our focus, keep our focus on that. What else should we have? Do you want to talk about the downtown plan now or...
Well, there's a couple of things.
Or under the CIP discussion?
Lori brought this, Lori asked a question about the retreat and kind of our notes from that. I don't know if you want to go over that or...
Well, I was just wanting to make sure that everything we did from our strategic planning event that we did in July got carried into this plan. And so just a couple of them that maybe they are, and like I said, you know, when you've looked at this, how many times you kind of start to glance through it when you're looking at it? Again, you look at the red ones. We talked about pursuing information and options and questions about affordable housing. So just some of the different things that we talked about on that. If, did you go through that, I guess, and pull all those into that?
I did not.
That might be just something that needs to be looked at. And instead of me saying what they are now, maybe we could just add that on as a, if you go through them and see if there's anything that needs to be pulled in in places.
Yep.
Yeah, because then there are some of these that we, both from the existing strategic plan or the notes from the retreat into the CIP. So I might speak more to that as CIP.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But there are some new ones here. I mean, we talked about utility rates, and I don't think that that shows up. So if you could look through that.
And like the rental inspection with that. And that might, and that affordable housing was another one I know. Community involvement, we kind of probably already got, but... So the revitalized downtown, you brought up, Rick. Is there something?
I don't, yeah, so I don't, if it's a strategic plan initiative or it's a capital improvement plan, discussion item?
Well, from the retreat, we talked, you know, downtown redevelopment was...
One of the things we wanted.
Was one of the items. And a couple of the bullets were develop a citywide incentive policy and then have a part that focuses on downtown. Also, public improvement with respect to the CIT specific to downtown. So...
Yeah, okay.
You know, when we get to the CIP, I would like to bring up some thoughts about the downtown area plan that we had before, and can we look at beginning to bite some of that off? Maybe we can pick that up in CIP discussion.
So it's in here, but it's in a timeframe of not really ongoing. It's more of a two instead of a one. And I think maybe that's right here.
On page ten.
Oh, yeah.
So maybe, I guess what we're saying is, or Kevin's saying is possibly moving that to a one instead of a two and looking more into it a little bit more aggressively and where we can at least start. Because even the two, the objective one A is update the master plan. Well, you know, that's probably the starting point is to get people together to start working on that.
Yep. And if there's, if there's something that's going to be in the CIP, it probably ought to be in the strategic plan, too, somehow.
Right, right.
It's, that's, I think it's good to do these together, the updates, kind of run parallel.
But it's really nice to knock off one F five point one. It's all lined up.
What was that?
All the emergency disaster stuff.
Yeah.
Really, there were several. I was impressed reading back, reading through this, how much has been accomplished.
Yeah, the comp plan, the parks plan, disaster plan. Yeah, lots of plans.
So what is the, your goals to have it ready for council adoption February 20th? So basically a month. So we'll have another meeting of input for refinement?
I mean, we could push it tomorrow. I just, I just, I want it...
We want it for the budgeting. We've started the budgeting process, so...
So we, yeah, we've got another. Now, if, I was thinking on the CIP might be more more detail oriented, that we might want a work session or something. But if we want...
Well, you said you, you said, we've said that we're going to have a public input session this time on the CIP because we haven't had that for a while, right?
No, I thought we decided...
We decided to put that off.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because of the...
Referendum, the Park and Rec. Right, right, right. Yeah, because those two would get confused.
They would wait until after that was completed.
Right.
You're right.
And I think that was a good decision.
Yeah.
From a workload standpoint, if nothing else.
What's the date for the completion of that?
Well, the CIP, it's more or less the same. You know, I'd like to, I'd like the CIP kind of wrapped up in the March timeframe. So at the next council meeting, my goal is to, on the CIP side, not to jump ahead of ourselves, but spend the next two weeks engaging with the department heads about capital improvement needs, new projects or revised to existing stuff, and have that list for you back at the next meeting so that the February 6th and then the second February meeting, we could spend on the CIP and this. But if that bleeds into March, it's not, it's not the end of the world. So I think the main, if, I'm not saying we're done with the strategic plan, but I mean, the main thing for me is to go back and look at those retreat notes and make sure that we're aligning those priorities.
I think if you leave those in, that'll pick up a number of things.
Do we have a desire, this might be off topic, but maybe this could be in this plan, is there a desire for a yearly retreat along those, you know, a council retreat kind of like we've done? We want to keep doing that each year? Yeah, we might, we might mix it up with the, with the location or time or whatever. But let's just, maybe we put that here in the plan that we'll do that on a yearly basis. And the timeframe was okay? You know, it's kind of after, you know, it's in the summertime. So we're after the budget primarily. And, okay, all right. We'll plan on doing that.
Okay?
Yeah.
Anything else on this before we move on? All right, we will move on to four B and we'll discuss the CIP update.
Yeah, much the same sort of introductory here. It's the yearly update. And like we mentioned before, there was thought about kind of completely re-engaging the public on this, but we're going to at least wait till next year. It's really only the third year of the plan. We had a, did one in 18, updated it last year, and this is kind of really the second sort of revision of the update. So I've included in the staff report really just what's already in the budget, the 20 to 24. So Exhibit A in the staff report is just copies of pages from the budget that lays out the current five-year plan. And then Exhibit C is that colorized spreadsheet that I know is, I would call it necessarily complex, but it's not exactly the easiest reading, which is kind of why in the budget document, we've laid all these out by year and we've kind of given some narration to them. But so I've got up on the screen now, this Exhibit A, this is what's in the budget document now. So I've got up on the screen now, this, this exhibit A, this is what's in the, in the budget document now essentially. It goes back one year. It talks about, actually went back two years, talks about 2019, 2020, and this is the current budget year. And then it goes out to 2024. So really the five years that this covers is 2020 through 2024. That's what's in the budget now. And then the following pages are that narration of, of the budget. I've also included the project detail scopes for all the stuff that's already in the plan. So that's exhibit B. Scroll through those quickly because I want to get to exhibit C, which is essentially our starting point for this year's update. And it's back there. I know your packet, if you have a hard copy, it's double sided.
Page one.
It's page one, page one of exhibit C. Here we go. I found it. So exhibit C, everything's just shifted one year. So we have the 2019 actuals, what we spent, our 2020 budget, and then the five years that this one covers is 21, 2, 3, 4, and 5. In this version, really the only changes I've made from already is the addition of the one year. I took out. Oh, I made, I adjusted the bond referendum money. So down in the update section at the bottom, toward the bottom of page one, under the new project section. You have, assuming the referendum passes, $3.2 million of improvements there programmed out. I've actually thrown in $500,000 into this year for that on the assumption that the referendum gets passed in March, that we'll be able to implement some of those things that are on that list in relatively quick order. So just kind of move that up a little bit. I've taken out, we had $25,000 in there actually last year. To demolish the old water plant down at the street department property, but I've taken that out because we're kind of in the middle of deciding for the redevelopment. What we're going to do with the redevelopment there. So, so right now, the, those are really the only changes I've made. The 2024 and 2025 plan years, if you look through those columns down through that sheet, you don't see much. Really, there's really two years worth of programming to be done there, about 1.3 million dollars worth of projects. In those years, I haven't really, I haven't engaged our bond council about, you know, is there opportunity for another bond issue in year four or five of the plan? We've engaged them in a lot of detail about, you know, in connection with the referendum bond, the $3.2 million possible bond there and the other bonding that we have in this plan. You know, we're showing about $8 million worth of bonding already. I haven't added to that at all. There might be some capacity for something at the end of this. You know, in 2024, 2025, but I haven't really engaged in that. So the 1.2 million dollars essentially. That we have to program basically comes from what was left over at the end of the current plan. So we had a couple hundred thousand dollars kind of left over. And then these reoccurring revenue streams, transfers from the general fund, CDBG money, federal fund exchange, those sorts of things that reoccur each year. So no new bonding is shown here, but I don't want, I don't know that that's an impossibility, I guess.
On revenues, how's the sales tax looking? Is it still?
Yeah, so sales tax this year.
Kind of keeping on track with the projections?
Yeah, so if you remember, we, we projected about a 3% increase from sales tax between 2018 and 2019. And in the middle of 2019, we got, I think it was about $130,000 back taxes from an audit that the state did on Hudamaki. With that, the tax, sales tax was up about seven and a half percent. If you take that out, sales tax was up only about a percent, or I think it's about 2%. So if you take that out, we're right at what, what our budget says. And I hear that a lot from the other county, communities in the county, that, that they're, they're either flat, they're, they're, you know, they're between zero and 2% increase over the previous year.
If not down, there's a few communities that are seeing it down just slightly.
Larger ones, maybe. Yeah, so that kind of surprised.
Either down or below projection, below projection.
And we're still, we're above the projection. Or the budgeted figure, which we are very conservative with. Yeah, whether that trend's going to continue or why that trend was, I really, I, I don't know that anybody really knows. But that's kind of where the sales tax is.
Like the Miller Park drainage?
Yeah.
For this year? I mean, is that, is that still needed since we moved the carnival uptown?
Yeah, so, and actually, I think the mayor mentioned that, the idea that, that soccer's not there and the carnival's not going to be there. Do we really need to be spending a bunch of? Did I mention that in here? But yeah, that's one I think we probably should look at the scope of that. So we have money in this year to design it. And, you know, maybe we leave that, but I think that's one that we definitely could look at to use that money.
Another one I, I think I want to, that we should think about, and it's related to the idea of the infrastructure master plan. When we're talking about where we have areas that are, are developable or where we are seeing land that is interest. Where development interests are looking at land. We've got project 21, the 95th Street sewer extension design and construction, and that's really been focused on. The area east of Lexington, right? Basically from there to the, to Kill Creek.
Yeah, well, it's not really focused, but that's where the line has to go.
That's where the line has to go, except I think you're looking at the pump station, you're looking at now a pump station that'll pump it back. I guess, I guess where I'm going with it all is. Is, I want to, I wonder if we ought to hold or rethink how that money's being applied because there may be other higher priority areas.
Weren't we concerned moving it west more?
Right. So what I'm wondering is if, you know, I know you're doing some work to look at. Infrastructure costs and how it would phase and how it, how we seek to get a good return on our investment, if you will, in terms of infrastructure investment relative to developable property. If you're able to do that in-house, awesome. If not, maybe that hundred, maybe something on the order of less than $150,000 would be better applied towards engaging in a consultant or something to assist with. A infrastructure master plan that really focuses on those areas that are generally west of Lexington or where, where we keep hearing about development interest. And maybe that dovetail in with what we may be able to support from Sunflower as well. Because I, I know you were saying that there's going to have to be a pump station involved in there somewhere. So before we think about having design and budgeting for construction of gravity sewer in some areas. I would rather see that we're, we're tentative or holding on that money until we have this master plan in place.
Um, great. I mean, that's exactly along the lines of what I've been doing the last several weeks. Is kind of a rethinking of the whole master plan and the phasing.
Yeah.
And these, because there's another project that relates to down on. In the new section, sewers, there's project 28 down here, sewers to 103rd Edgerton. It's the same way.
Yeah.
But that wouldn't start design until next year.
Yeah, I like that the money is held in the budget. In particular, though, I wouldn't be adverse to reprogramming the, the 150,000 or some part of that in some way. If you needed assistance with data or technical support and developing a master plan that we really can figure out how to spend those kinds of money on.
And so what I was thinking about that for that is along that line, but then also include all the utilities for that southwest area.
Right, because it's sewer, roads, and water. We need to, we need to consider the, what, what's the ticket? What's the cost if a development opportunity does come along? That we're going to be expected to provide infrastructure for.
Exactly. So, you know, so this money for this year gets kind of refocused toward, toward that.
That would be my suggestion for discussion here.
But the, but the project costs kind of remain in the CIP somewhere.
It just may get applied differently.
Yeah, maybe a less specific thing for this year.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we want to try and keep the funds available to move forward if we have opportunity, but still find where that opportunity is best located.
It's, it's a timing thing, you know, if. If, if there's an economic, a home run economic development opportunity out there that we need to implement, we have it. You know, we have the, we have the ability to do that if we leave the funds in here.
And in particular, I'm concerned about, do we, do we really have a good plan to know that if that home run economic opportunity comes along, what's it going to cost us?
Yep, exactly.
What's it going to cost us in roads, water, and sewer?
With you there, yeah.
That gives us basis for return on investment.
Right.
Yeah. What level of home run opportunity would qualify?
Yeah, right.
The other one that is coming up on the horizon then is, would be project 30, Lexington Avenue pedestrian crossing improvements. And that is 2021, so it's still out a year, but that's a quarter million dollars that, that we're going to really need to be thinking about what is included in that. And I know the crossing there at Lexington Trails Middle School is one that comes up a lot. And just reading the description on it, we say there's four areas where we need to look at pedestrian crossing issues. But we're, you know, we're at 2020, we're at a point where we need to start thinking about what is really going to be included in that.
Yes.
And lighting is part of it. And lighting is part of what the project description says.
Yeah.
Yep.
Lighting, active.
Lighting as well as signals.
Crosswalk signals.
Well, and then brought up, I think one of the, one of the ones we'll hear, or one of the, I'll put forward as kind of a new project is nighttime street lighting along Lexington Avenue and Commerce Drive. If you look at, drive the new section of 91st. It looks fantastic. It really does. There's nothing out there.
Yeah.
The man at night, it looks great.
Some of these dovetail because it's like the crosswalk at Dollar General. If you look at it at night, it's not lit well at all.
No, it's not at all. Yeah, that is, and that is one of those.
And that's a huge cross, I mean, that's one of probably the two, that's probably the biggest crosswalk almost and. It's just, I mean, just forget the active signals and stuff, because it's got a somewhat active signal, but it's just dark. If somebody, if somebody's in even moderately dark clothing, you aren't going to see them right away.
Boulevard type lighting project all along Lexington would just.
Or at least strategically.
Yeah.
You may not need to light the whole thing, but there's some strategic areas.
And then Commerce Drive is just really dark.
Yeah, well, it's got, it's all, you know, you talk about how they, how these dovetail together. It also fits in with the trails plan. So areas where we're encouraging bike and, and, and hike, biking and pedestrian activity. Are areas we need to think about lighting as well. Commerce may not be one of those, but Lexington certainly is.
Yeah, Lexington.
Is that going to be though, is, so the dollars that you have down here, I think was more of a random or a number based on the cross.
It was based on a signalized crossing.
The signal light type thing, so.
Yeah.
And some sidewalk maybe to tie it.
So do we need to maybe add somewhere in all of our, you know, something for some planning on that? I mean. Just keep it on there or?
Well, that's where I was going. It's next year. We need to be thinking about it this year.
Well, that's good. So the larger projects, I've got design one year, implementation the next. Maybe this one should have been that way.
Or at least you need to spend some time on it.
Yeah, yeah, this year.
This year.
Okay.
The other thing I'd like to bring up for consideration that's not on here, but it does fit with our strategic objectives, is related to the downtown plan. You know, we're seeing a lot of activity downtown or some, some good new activity, maybe not a lot, but some good new activity. And we had brought up a couple of the plans that we had, and one of them I'd like us to think about is. The downtown streetscape plan was a big kind of animal to bite off. But I'm wondering if we can't start to. And it's not really that one. If you can go back to the original one.
Yeah.
My thought would be, can we start to bite off a little bit of corner treatment? So for example, you know, the corner at, at Shawnee or the corner over at Peoria, which would be over by Cause Coffee. Where, you know, really what these are, are taking the, the depth of the diagonal parking and bringing the curb out to shortening the crosswalk space up. But that also gives you a little area to work with in terms of a bench or lighting or, or something. I know that the overall streetscape's a lot, but I'm wondering if we can't start to bite off either the corner treatments there. Or maybe the corner treatments by the fire station where we've paved the parking lot, which was part of the plan, was turning that into, to useful area. Basically building out those curbs that are the depth of the diagonal parking on the four corners and doing some crosswalk treatment. That either gives a little focal point to the center of downtown or bookending it, doing the half intersection. On the, either end of that two block area. That way you kind of define the space that is our downtown. And I think we can do that. Fairly economically without getting into something where we're creating trees or planters that require maintenance and, you know, ongoing, ongoing expense. But, you know, look at either Shawnee there where you bring, bring the corner on the west side of the intersection. Out, yeah, you bump that out, you shorten the crosswalk area, and that sort of defines the entry into downtown.
So chip away at that.
Chip away at it by cor, starting with some corner treatments, either the bookends or maybe the one right there at Wia. Where, where you do all four corners of that, and that's sort of the center focal point of downtown. You know, and maybe can we reallocate some money? You mentioned the, the drainage money at Miller Park.
Bad about that would be you're cutting in space that is going to hurt our DeSoto days.
Well, that's why we may immediately.
Bring those in, you know, you're cutting a lot of space for when those streets are blocked off anyway. And they need every little inch they got up there on that street, but that's going to hurt it.
No, that's a good point, and especially if you do it at Wia. But I think if you did the end ones at Shawnee or, or out at Peoria.
Yeah. It's not affected by the carnival.
Yeah, because really, like if you just bookended it, you just did the two, the two corners there. Yeah, Mike, right, right, where Mike just had the hand.
Kevin.
Yeah.
I'll pass it on around.
Yeah.
I was looking for, I can't find it.
Well, and I've got one pulled up that's a little less, it's a little bit different. This one was in. One of the plans and you can kind of see how it's just, you know, just bumped out a little bit.
Yeah, it's the corner. It's just the corner tree. That's another representation.
This, that one I think has a little bit more what futuristic, the whole buildings and stuff aren't right. Yeah. Whereas this has a little bit more.
There's a blow up. It's blocking my block. So look all the way to the right side of that, you know.
And Danny, I understand what you're saying about that, but I think the amount of space that you're taking away can't be enough to distract. I mean, the whole DeSoto days. Well, and I get that, but.
And we don't have anything there.
But, but all of a sudden now we're changing.
Now, at the end of the blocks, I, I say okay, but not in the middle.
Right. And that may be, that, that could be the argument.
Fight there before.
No, I get it. I get it.
I, I think it's something to look at. I like the idea of chipping away. I've, I've not been one that's wanted to advocate doing much on the streetscape until business owners take. Something happens where, like KJ's and some of the others. I did have an inquiry from somebody about the spot next to KJ's and whether the owner would be willing to sell. So there is getting some interest. In the downtown area with Lenexa Baptist coming in and being willing to actually, so it's not tax revenue, but they're willing to rehab and make the building nice. Chipping away might not be a bad idea as far as that. And it might be, we look at working on something at that west end where Cause Coffee is.
Right.
And the church would be to where, where there's activity in the downtown area, you start working on that and as it spreads and continues.
Yeah. No, I think the corner by cause would be a really good one because there is a lot of pedestrian activity.
These are as much streetscape, there's pedestrian safety enhancements more than they are beautification.
Good point.
And that shortens the crossing distance, so it puts pedestrian in harm's way for a less.
How far out they come, I mean, we can look at different designs, things on that, but at least looking at starting to do something where the activity in downtown is creating an interest and built. Where the owners are putting in effort, the city can start looking at putting some effort towards.
And I'm thinking as, as we're getting some successes out by the highway, then let's also be sure that we're, we're applying some success downtown. We got, we had that great article in the Star. I assume our communications director maybe helped facilitate a little good, good PR there, and maybe you can talk about that later, but you know, I read that article.
We are getting some small successes downtown. We are getting some small successes downtown, and if we can encourage those with chipping away and doing some things on the streetscape by those areas, then potentially it can expand.
Sarah Ritter wrote that article.
Yeah.
Ironically, the reporter on that article's name is Sarah Ritter.
Oh, I didn't even know.
Not our Sarah.
Not our Sarah.
Without the H.
But yeah, I, you know, I kind of like maybe starting with the bookending an idea, because it's, it puts one of the crossings over by KJ's, and it puts the other crossing over there by cause. And then we can maybe start to fill in the middle in a, in a productive sort of way, depending on how it goes. But, and yeah, hopefully you get a little back and forth. We do a little, city, the private, um, investors do a little, and we keep going. So, um.
And I mean, that can even be part of the potential incentive of an area start, of downtown starts getting developed, we'll come alongside and start.
And replace the street lights.
Working with.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it can be potentially tied to some incentive of, when you start seeing economic activity there, because you're improving it, then we'll work with you on improving.
So for the CIP, we can take the streetscape plan and, and, you know.
Yeah, it's an honorable, it's an honorable mention mode right now. I'd like to see it moved up.
And, and put it on the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Maybe in the outer years, it gives us time to work through these things.
Yeah.
React.
You know, and Rick's comment about the pedestrian safety thing, could it be a project that we also use C, a CDBG application for?
Sure, yeah.
Because of that?
Yeah, I'm trying to think. It's, it's an eligible area.
It's an eligible area, and if we concentrate it on the crossing and.
Yeah, I think.
Then we can get a little downtown beautification out of it.
Yeah. Good.
I think those are the only comments I had.
Okay. Anything else?
All right. Well, I have some good notes. I'll, I'll bring this back with the input from Department Heads February 6th. So we have three, three weeks between the next meeting, so that'll give me a little time.
Downtown presentation.
Generate some of this, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Good. Well, thanks for the discussion. That was good.
Uh, do we have an executive session tonight?
We do. I just have, yeah, it should be five minutes. Patrick, is that?
Yeah.
How much, five minutes?
Yeah.
And by my clock, it is 7:52 right now.
Well, I'll say 53, just to give me time to write this down here.
Yeah.
Lana, I'll, um, I'll mute the mics, so if you talk to yourself.
I'll make a motion. We recess into executive session at 7:53, four, five minutes to discuss land acquisition pursuant to KSA 75-4319B6, with the open meeting resuming in the City Council Chamber at 7:58.
I will second that.
Okay, we have motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hosts, all right.
Don't be talking to yourself. Don't be talking to yourself.